Twenty twenty four, six P M. I will note that on the printed agenda, some of them may still say six thirty and that was inaccurate. The actual time was advertised at six P M. We'll begin our meeting as is our custom. We have a guest. She would like to lead us on the pledge allegiance. I'll make the offer. If you want to come forward. All you gotta do is say two words, "I pledge." She's like, "No, no." All right. Everybody will rise as we say the pledge allegiance. I'd like to make the offer. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, our invocation is led by Pastor Charlie Jones from the Main Cross Baptist Church. I'll call forward Pastor Jones and you're welcome to come up to the mic and we appreciate you being here.
This city's looking real good from when I came to this city to pastor fifty-four years ago. Shall we pray? Dear Lord, thank you for officials in our city make decisions and to keep this city going in the right direction. I praise your blessing, each one of them, and help them to make wise decisions and godly decisions in just every way we are blessed upon this city as new people are moving in, all these buildings going up. Blessed in Jesus' name, amen. Thanks for.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hear. I get around slow.
You're doing great.
All right. We'll have our roll call. Bo Bertram.
Here.
Ronnie Glevins.
Here.
Shannon Eldredge.
Here.
Brian Hester.
Here.
Chuck Deaton.
Here.
Other record show that Mayor Hodges and their treasurer Donna Coomer are present as well as City Attorney Perry McColl. Squeaking in here, solid. All right. You have an agenda that's been provided. I just need to make just a small administrative change addition under the ordinances and resolutions. You'll notice that we're having a public hearing tonight for ordinance twenty twenty four O R thirteen, which is the twenty twenty five budget. We don't have that listed in the order, but it will actually come up for action under item D. Well, I had item D under ordinances and resolutions and add that ordinance there. And then as a part of that, but requiring a separate vote, we have our three-year growth levy appeal that I passed out on your desk. This application came in this morning, so I'll go ahead and print it out and I'll add that as item E. So we'll have item D will be the budget and item E will be the growth levy appeal. And with those amendments, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I made a motion.
Have a motion from Ronnie Glevins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Brian Hester. Any other questions or edits to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. You have your standing business, which includes the approval of prior meeting minutes from our August fifth meeting, the current claims and the payroll allowance docket from July twenty ninth to September first. Entertain a motion to approve.
I have a motion.
I have a motion from Chuck Deaton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ronnie Glevins. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. I don't believe anybody was signed up for public comments, but now it'll be time to say so if you are. See, I'll call for Brusady Moreno. Give us an update on how things are going with the high school.
And maybe an update on the Fiesta.
Well, hi.
Hi.
Um, Fiesta went really good. I had a lot of feedback from older neighbors that like, well, were used to it anyway. And they really liked the mariachi band and I know a lot of people felt really included and they're waiting for next year and hoping it to be bigger and a lot more different in Spanish. It's not just one type, so very good. It was really good, so. There's a lot of sport updates, so we're gonna start off with Cameron. Jen recorded a personal best to the top twenty of all time in cross country. And then Ava Benner committed to school and to play volleyball at Midway University. Aidan Stewart committed to school to play softball at Pinmont University. Alexis Camilla was named to the Storm Junior Bowling Team, a prestigious team for the nation's best young bowlers. Homecoming Parade is Thursday at five and then the homecoming ceremony is Friday at the football game during halftime. And then the C H S SEAL team presented over a hundred students with sport passes for their hard work in the classroom and community. C H S volleyball team is participating with the Genesis Jiu-Jitsu to offer women's self-defense classes for all years thirteen and up. And it's gonna be September twenty ninth from two to four at Charlestown Middle. And it's only twenty dollars and you could RSVP with Jennifer, who's a volleyball coach. It's five oh two, five two three, two three nine. And then the last thing I have is that Charlestown McDonald's is raising money for the Charlestown High School sports on Thursday, September twenty sixth. So ten percent of our sales will go to Pirate Athletics on the twenty sixth.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Brusady.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was expecting Chancellor Ford here tonight. I don't know if maybe she's caught in traffic and running late, so I don't know if you can hang out and maybe get her some time. And we will just reserve the right that if she comes in, we can pause wherever regarding the meeting and get her to recognize you, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor's comments. First off, I wanted to give you guys an update on the animal control situation. Now, remember a few meetings ago, they had sent a revised agreement and were asking us to increase our annual payment from twenty-six thousand, which is what we've paid for a while, to sixty thousand, which I thought was a lot. I had a meeting with them. Perry and I went and Tubby, our animal control officer, went in bed with the animal control director there, the Jeffersonville Animal Shelter and was in with their attorney. And I pointed out that some of the items in the line item maybe should be relegated only to the city of Jeffersonville. Their animal control officer, for instance, any vehicles, that kind of stuff. And so they went back, they agreed and they went back and they pulled out anything that wasn't really to the shelter maintenance itself. So what they are including in the budget now would be staff at the shelter, penal techs and admin staff who run the shelter, supplies for the shelter, operation costs like electricity, heat, air, those kinds of things, water, humor. And then any contracts that they have that are related to the care of the animals. So for instance, some animals that come in require medical care or spay meat or those kinds of things. So they narrowed it down to just the operations cost, nothing that is just for animal services for the city of Jeffersonville. And so that revised total, it went from the total that they were dividing up between the municipalities went from eight hundred fifty-nine thousand to around seven hundred fifteen thousand. But what they came back with and proposed is that they do a gradual increase over three years instead of just asking us right off the bat to pay the full amount. So they're proposing Charlestown's portion for next year would be thirty-four thousand, forty dollars and seventy-five cents. Year two would be forty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-six and fifty-one cents. And then year three, that revised full amount would be fifty thousand, seventy-one dollars and fifty-three cents. I have not received back from them the actual agreement yet. Some of the other municipalities and I had asked for some clarification about the services that we're paying for in that agreement and what the city of Jeffersonville's portion of those services would be. But I wanted to get feedback from you so that I could communicate back to them if these dollar amounts are more in line with what you think should happen. I mean, I understand realistically, she may be case, everything has gone up and she, their budget, you know, their ask for the other cities has not, but we still have some accountability measures, but I wanted to get the pulse of where you feel on this for now, so I can give her feedback if they're working on that agreement.
Where are we at at the moment?
Right now, for the past seven years, we've paid twenty-six thousand, twenty, I think it's twenty-six. It's in change.
So it's doubling in three years?
Yeah.
We've paid that though since, um, I wanna say that agreement's been in place since twenty-ten. It's never gone up.
No, I get that.
Or twenty-twelve, it's never gone up.
I guess I'm kinda curious as to how it's doubling in three years and been like, I know we've paid that the same amount of money, but.
Right.
But it's like doubling.
The city of Jeffersonville has eaten the costs, the excess costs apparently every year. And then they got so bad, their budget's getting close to a million dollars and they're hurting, so they came back to the tables that we need to ask the other units to pay more.
I understand it's a hundred thousand dollar budget and we're gonna pay fifty-seven thousand. And that's not unreasonable, but it's still doubling.
Yep.
How many municipalities get into that, you know?
So it's Borden, Charlestown, Clarksville, Sellersburg, Utica, the county and the city of Jeffersonville. All paid, all divided costs. Jeffersonville will have the portion that is based on the population, so it's percentage based. So for instance, Sellersburg, theirs is a little bit higher than ours, but not by much, only about seven thousand dollars. The county would be paying at the end of year three, the county, for instance, would be paying a hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred seventy-four. It's based on the population.
Do we use it, what it then?
We use it a reasonable amount. I mean, we, a lot of times when we catch a stray dog, um, we find the owners honestly before we even have to take it down there because we post on Facebook and people are usually looking for their dog when it gets out. We're usually able to find, we have a holding cage and so depends on the time of day when it's caught. And you know, if we catch it early enough in the day where we can post it, we'll just hold on to it and not run it down until we're closing or we don't wanna leave it in there overnight. We do have an emergency contract with New Washington Animal Control. They provide after hours and weekend coverage. That way Tubby's not having to be on call all the time.
But that's separate from this?
Separate from this, yeah. And so sometimes he gets some at night that he has to take down there or after hours. But you know, it's hard to narrow down. I asked them for the numbers and honestly, the numbers felt a little high. They were saying that we had, you know, over, I think, four hundred surrenders. I hope there's no way for a year that we've done that. But I think what's happening is they're counting us in with the township because when somebody, when a dog is being dropped off, it's hard to tell where it's coming from. And they were, that was also included, the number of owner surrenders, which I explained that we're not really responsible for owner surrenders, you know, that's a personal thing. And when they're coming in and going to Charle, with their address of Charlestown, then they're just assuming it's city and it doesn't mean that it is. So, I mean, it is a nice service to have. The thing that's really valuable out of it honestly is the trap, litter, release program for the cats. I asked Tubby and even in the four years I've been mayor, I know the cat population is significantly down from where it was. We do participate in that T N R program where we trap the cats. If they're feral cats, we will provide traps and take them down and they will spay or litter them. And they bring them back to the general area and let them go, but the whole point is they can't reproduce it that way on the feral cats. And it has started to help over the cat population. So that's what we use it for. We also use it for bite holes. So there is, it is essential to have a place to have for bite holes. So if a dog bites and they have to take a police report, the dog has to be under observation for a period of days. We use it for that as well. I know some of the other municipalities have explored other options. They've reached out to New Albany to see if they could work out a deal with them. I have not done that yet. If you would like me to explore other options, I'm happy to do that to see what would, what the impact or cost would be. I just know that one of the, you know, try to be good neighbors in Clark County for one thing. And one of the critical pieces of this is that if one municipality pulls out of this, then that really hurts the shelter overall. And the shelter did have some pretty impressive statistics on their adoptions and the work that they do. They, they're rehoming a lot of animals, so they're not having to, you know, euthanize as often, so. It's up to you, like, you know, if you wanna wait and get the final agreement or if you want me to try to reach out to another group. I know that running our own would be way more expensive.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I just can't imagine Tubby having to take animals to New Albany all the time.
No, I think we just stay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll tell her that I talked to them over the numbers that we're eager to see the actual final agreement. Hopefully they'll send that over and maybe I'll make sure that Perry and Michael Walter both get a copy of that review. Okay? All right. The other thing I had for you is I wanted to share a presentation with you before we, as we enter budget season. I know a lot of people do kind of a state of, a lot of mayors do their state of the city addresses in January and I don't know, I kinda like doing one right at budget time because I think it makes sense for me. And so this was a shell of a Grove Municipal World Summit we did in January of last year. And so I worked with staff and Jill Stages and Tubby and that. But before we do that, I just noticed Chancellor Ford is here. So we will go ahead and call you forward so that we can make this presentation. We'll just pause for a moment and do that. Chancellor Ford from I U S is here tonight to recognize Brusady Moreno, our Legislative Youth Advisor. Brusady, and Chancellor, if you'll come forward. So this kinda started with, I guess, Donna Reed.
Yes.
Yes. Works at I U S and if you wanna kinda talk through how this came to be, Chancellor, that would be great.
That'd be great. Well, Mayor Hodges and Council, thank you so much for having me today. Very nice to meet you, Brusady. And at IU Southeast, we share the same passion you have for the youth of our community. And we know that you having your legislative youth liaison and advisor is really an important step. And we wanna recognize her leadership as well as Ethan's leadership from your previous legislative youth advisor and provide them with a five-hundred-dollar renewable scholarship when you finish high school and hopefully begin at IU Southeast. And so we're make, started this in Jeffersonville. We're bringing this to Charlestown and we'll also share this with a group of youth in Clarksville. So I am very, very pleased to be here this evening to present a certificate of scholarship to Brusady Moreno and wanna welcome you to the IU Southeast family and look forward to having you as a student. Even while you're in high school, you can take a few courses with us, you know that, right? Okay. Very good. Congratulations.
I'm sorry, with the staff, with it being after hours, so our media director's not here, so let me grab a picture.
Oh, that would be great. I have one for Ethan if you wanna.
Okay.
I can leave that for you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Are we ready?
Okay. So if you'll look here. One, two, three. Get one this way or you're gonna be mad. One, two, three.
All right. Thank you so much, Chancellor. Thank you. Thank you. I'll give that to you. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah. Isn't that great?
Really cool stuff.
Really appreciate that. Glad we have you. You two are doing a thing and Indiana University Southeast has been a really good partner for the city. They also sponsor the books that we do every year, the Read Across the Neighbors Program, which is schools. We have, they kinda, IU, IB Tech and IU split the cost. So IU S does some of the grades and IB Tech does the other and they pay for the books. So every kid from those classrooms from his preschool, second grade and fourth grade walks out with the actual copies of the book and the whole class. So it touches kids through those grades and I don't know what we'd do without those college relationships. Really great. Okay. Sorry for that little break and pause. We'll move on. So anyway, I wanted to give just a brief stat. So the first few slides are just pretty redundant. So the first is a map of Charlestown, you know where we are. Here are some of our demographics. We have, it talks about some of the school stuff. Media income here is sixty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-five. That has gone up even since we did our master plan in twenty sixteen, so things have grown up. Population trends, I will say that this shows the twenty twenty-four population at eighty-six hundred. I do believe when y'all did the redistricting though, after twenty twenty census, what they found is actually it hovers around eighty-nine hundred or right now. So we're just shy of nine thousand people. You can see the change over time. Our market overview shows what's happened with the housing and home prices. Of course, there's been a big increase from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-two and even a big jump from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. But here are some of the things that we did in the past couple of years. So first up, as you all know, we did our Greenway Park playground improvements. The community foundation grant of a hundred fifty thousand dollars and then the city match of a hundred fifty thousand when a grant from the playground company allowed that. It's a very park of the playground, but very few times when the election I said I'd drop by and I don't see people playing. We've had a lot of really good feedback from that. We opened the depot this year. That was a, that was funded by the redevelopment commission, a two-hundred fifty thousand dollar investment. It's open April through September and then December through Christmas, from light up through Christmas. The regular hours are Thursday through Sunday. We have added staff to manage this and that's reflected in the budget request this year. We've made some significant downtown enhancements. The return on investment on this has been spectacular. So through the redevelopment commission, in twenty twenty-one, we started these facade improvements. So just a couple of the examples here on the slide, you see the ride built building with what he did and then also, everybody always calls it the old dry cleaners, the average bound support services. For perspective, we've done nineteen projects, have been awarded a total of four hundred and sixty thousand dollar investment with a hundred and sixty-three thousand of that city investment. The return on investment, sixty-four percent of the investment has been private and thirty-six percent has been from the city. So this has been a very good return. And you also saw some organic with the Miami Key building updating. They didn't get a facade grant, but they went ahead and updated when all this is going on too, so that was nice. Some other downtown enhancements, we always work on sidewalks. It's one of the most popular questions I get is what are you doing sidewalks in my area? And my answer is always sidewalk work is ongoing. It never stops. But the two most, the largest recent projects we did, we did the section of High Street from Market to Harrison in preparation of the apartments at Forest Edge coming in, people using that area more often. That also solved a long-term drainage issue when we did that. And then the infrastructure and sidewalks that we did down Water Street last year, that was redevelopment funded, both of those. So we are working on our sidewalks on the other section of High Street for next year on our community process because there's a lot of people that walk into a lot of curbs without ADA accessibility. So we hope to do from Market Street out to the middle school and do all of that next year. We are also working this year on getting, quote, on finally finishing Monroe. There are still sections of Monroe that are not done. The section from Park Street to the tennis courts and then the section from Folkerson to Market Street needs to be done, so. Some retail commercial enhancements have been all over, but two that we wanted to highlight were the Papa John's that you see under construction. They originally wanted to submit a plan for a building that would have two stores, but then after reflecting on it, they went with one, so it's gonna have a door. I don't know if you've noticed, they're putting a door through lane in over there. And then the subway, where subway relocated, that's been a big change. There's two spaces there still from these. Housing is always a topic of conversation. Our single-family construction permits are definitely on the rise. You can look at those numbers just for twenty twenty-four, we're already at a hundred and seventy-one and that's not really finished yet, so we're moving right along. Subdivisions that are still under construction, Charlestown Landing is still adding single-family homes. Pleasant Ridge, of course, is still undergoing a lot of construction. Danbury Oaks, Heritage Place and Springville, we have a, right now Skipper's Ridge is on hold. Nothing's being developed there at this time. When we look at multifamily, we are seeing a rise of multifamily homes as well. Forest Edge and Charlestown Flats are under construction right now and they expect to be leasing in late twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. They're just moving right along. They've been good neighbors and construction, I think it's going well. Creekside is adding some new duplexes that are accessible duplexes down there. Folkerson under construction right now, already fourteen units. And then Charlestown Landing is still adding multifamily units as well. Some industrial development, of course, River Ridge is starting to develop on her end. We have C T D I, which is the building that you see now off of Miami Trail, sort of in the back. They're hiring right now six hundred and fifty jobs for that. That is, what they do is they do phone updates, iPads, all that. I think this is their Android. So the original building they built further down in River Ridge does Apple and this one's doing Android, A T and T products, those kinds of things. So it's very high-tech, high-skill jobs. And then the Cheesecake Factory did close, Cheesecake Factory Bakery, let me be clear, it's not the restaurant. They did close on their land. It's gonna be the building that's most up front off of Miami Trail, right along sixty-two. And they want to build a very nice attractive building. Their first phase calls for two hundred jobs and they hope to break ground early twenty twenty-five. Other industrial development, of course, Shadow Lake is moving right along. I don't know if you've seen the roundabout and the marker there, but it's absolutely stunning. Dan Chris Jenny, it's painting, doesn't do anything halfway. It absolutely looks beautiful. They've opened their headquarters there as well, but the U S Capital Development has two buildings. They're under construction, these two ones you did the abatement on a while back. They're already turned dirt, so they closed and they're under construction right now. The Dan Chris Jenny Legacy Complex is open as well. The office is a three-point-nine million dollar investment and the maintenance facility is a five-hundred thousand dollar investment. As a side note, they have a full paint booth at that maintenance facility and I'm happy to let you know that today, the Charlestown Express got driven over there and is getting a fresh coat of paint donated from D C. So we're going to Christmas, looking all bright and shiny. The Shadow Lake Park and the parks expansion, of course, we received some additional land. We already had the hundred and six acres. In twenty twenty-two, we received the seventy acres at Shadow Lake Park and then the seven-point-eight acres kind of back behind the dog park. We have a vision plan done for that Shadow Lake Park now. So here are some things of where we are going or where I would like to see us go. Shadow Lake's commercial retail development is expected to take off. As they develop out there, the whole front section of sixty-two and then kind of back circling around near the industrial park, they anticipate being commercial retail. They really want attraction, restaurants and shops. They also have a residential component. This would be Shadow Brook Farm on the section from High Jackson to four oh three. Variety of types of homes, everything from garden homes that are popular right now up to estate-sized homes in multifamily. We're taking some steps toward downtown enhancements through the redevelopment commission. The first image that you see there, that little streetscape, that is as if you're standing on Market Street looking up towards the square, the trees there at the gazebo would be right behind those trees. This was a result of the IU Rural Placemaking Grant that Brian Smith, our media director, applied for and received. So a group of students from IU Rural Placemaking worked with stakeholders here in the city to come up with a plan for activating that section of the street for a nice hangout. They used influence from the ammunition plant, imagery from the ammunition plant so that we could draw from our history and have a little pergola seating. And they wanted, we wanted, we told them, we want people to know that they're in Charlestown when they pull up to there, so that's why you see the Charlestown name on it. And then we're hoping to carry on with these improvements on down the road. The redevelopment commission this year has acquired the old Y M C A. Everything is always the old such and such. It's the old Y M C A building and it is slated to be demolished in January of twenty twenty-five for, we're gonna talk to Christmas. And the redevelopment commission, just at your last meeting, where H I signed on to Taylor, Secretary Williams, to do kind of a concept vision for that corner with feedback to say what, what can we be. And we're meeting soon on that, I believe. You mean John Spencer?
Yeah.
Yep. Other downtown enhancements, Life Springs should be opening, we hope sometime soon. We're really hoping before community days because we need to use their parking lot, but they really transformed that building. It's starting to come together a little bit nice. Then we have full medical facility or pediatric all the way up. And then of course, I've talked to all of you about renovating the A and E Center. That's something I hope that we can do. The building is long and we're due for a makeover. And I hope that as the movement to the next year or two, we can begin to talk about how we can do that. You might have noticed a big bunch of rocks, huge boulders, dropped off down in Greenway Park. I'm happy to let you know that the Creek Bank Stabilization Project has begun and is expected to be finished before October first. If you look in the picture, you can see how much the Creek Bank had eroded away from the gazebo that Doug Corn pavilion. If you look in the picture, you can see how much the Creek Bank had a road away from the gazebo, the Doug Corn Pavilion, and we were at a point where we were about to lose the pavilion. So the redevelopment commission is, is covering the cost of this Creek Bank stabilization. It took a while to get the permitting because of the creek, but it's in progress. The redevelopment commission also purchased the H&R Block. It's under lease from H&R Block until April of next year, and then the plan is to tear it down and create more parking, especially for accessible parking there to access Greenwood Park and the square. And then we applied for a Ready Grant and Lilly Grant. There's been a lot of interest in making some changes down Charlestown Landing Road to activate that Jesse Ballou property. We have, through the redevelopment commission a few years ago, intersection improvement concept for that intersection for sixty-two and three. And it's, you know, the question of what to do. Well, at the same time, the State Park, Charlestown State Park approached us and said that they really wanted to move the entrance of their park down at the end of that road. They feel like it would make people feel more like they were in Charlestown because it's more centrally located. They feel like it would be safer to have it there rather than where it is, especially if Skipper's Ridge does develop. So we asked the Ready Grant people and Lilly Grant people for some funds to tear down and renovate the city buildings there, the Quonset Huts, because they look so bad, and to do those road improvements. We were not approved for the, for the initial round of those. I don't know what's going to happen, but I will let you know that Congresswoman Erin Houghton visited, and we met onsite there. And she is bringing a team back in October to discuss how we might be able to get some federal assistance since what was left behind was Army. And we feel like Charlestown received kind of the worst end of that plan, and we're still trying to clean up those huts that have been there that whole time. It's what we received from the Army, and we need an opportunity to recover from that. So she will be back in October to talk about how we can activate this. Other initial concepts or ideas about this is the four-H fairgrounds. River Ridge needs to move the four-H fairgrounds from where they are in order to activate rail service because there's no way right now to get rail in there without using that portion of the land, the way that rail would have to come in. And if they do that, they were looking for a home, and I did not want to see them leave Charlestown. I think they're a very valuable asset to the community. And so nothing is set in stone, but we did ask the four-H, I went to the four-H board and asked about their flavor of having a large agricultural event center, a four-H fairgrounds on that land, and they were very amenable to it. So this concept just kind of shows what that might look like. Nothing's set in stone, it's the concept, but I really don't want to see them leave Charlestown. I think the opportunity to develop that land for recreation is huge. And then, of course, you've noticed this, everything in Charlestown's under construction, even the schools and the library. So the school is under construction right now, excited to open for next fall's enrollment, and the library is expected to finish sometime this year with their expansion. On infrastructure, the wastewater treatment plan is on, is in progress, and it's on schedule for now. If you haven't gone out there, I'm sure Tim Crawford would love to see you. He's very excited to show that his administrative building is, is up, and he's very excited to move in there as soon as possible. We also are moving, progressing along with the Highway sixty-two lift station, which is a part of our agreed order for item that we have to replace. I'll have information for you soon, probably during next meeting on that, on getting that replaced. And then the preliminary engineering report is going to address the expansion of the Spring Street Lift Station to address another part of that agreed order. I had, I asked, and the redevelopment commission graciously completed a corridor study for County Road four oh three, Highway three, and High Jackson. It's very complicated, having so many great residents that we want to take care of, but not only are having responsibility for any of the roads that get them in and out of our city. Because there are certainly improvements that need to be made that we cannot make. And so I thought that if we invested in a corridor study, it might be the first step to giving it to the county to be able to say, we did this part for you. Help us out. I did have a good meeting with Brian Glover fairly recently, and we talked about this corridor study. And our, the engineer that did it at United is the group that's doing the roundabout for them down at Stacy Road, and so they're going to cross-share their information. So perhaps we can start to see some of the improvements that they recommended for four oh three, including intersection improvements and ways to help traffic turn and flow a little better. And then we do, we're still discussing the expansion of Christiany Parkway from High Jackson to four oh three to help ease some of that stress as well. And then I wanted to give you a staff update so that you know where we are with our numbers. It's amazing to me when I realize how much we're able to pull up with fifty-two staff members. I don't think people understand how little staff the city has to do what we do. Executive staff, that includes the mayor's assistant and receptionist, who also works for sanitation, taking calls. There's only two, we have one media and IT guy, and we wear him out. Donna's office has five, and they work their fingers to the bone on all this stuff. That includes utilities, human resources, accounts payable and receivable, receiving, records retention and documentation, minutes, the whole works. Police, we have eighteen officers, that includes chief and assistant chief, and then we have two administrative positions, Sherry and Chuck, who are our evidence technician. Two of those patrol positions are open, and I got an update this morning of the staff meeting that they are in the hiring process. They're still finishing background checks right now in the pool of applicants. They have total seven applicants this round, and they hope to continue to progress through that really quickly. We have ten city maintenance, and what I mean by city maintenance, that's everything, including people, parks, who are mowing grass, the lawn team, the street team that's working on patching roads, putting up signs, doing small concrete work, those kinds of projects. And then people like, that don't have a home department, like I have to go data who's our facilities maintenance person and takes care of all of our buildings and does extra projects. Billy Bayes, who kind of works out in sanitation a lot, does a lot of the repairs on our vehicles so we don't have to pay for those. Sanitation has four supervisors and three drivers. Wastewater's up to five. Parks and Recreation only has two full-time positions. One of the things I've accounted for in the budget this year is the addition of a third person to help them out, ease some of that stress on the managers. With all the parks, events, programming and spaces we have going on, they need some relief. And then planning and zoning, drainage, code enforcement and animal control, we ask all those things, have only three people. And one of them announced his two-week notice today. John Palmer is retiring, so we are in the market now for rebuilding inspector. And so that's what we do, we do it all with fifty-two staff members. And that's a lot for fifty-two staff members. Fifty-two and then me and Donna. So that's kind of the, the brief update of where things are with us, and I thank you for attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. All right.
A lot going on.
Yep, a lot going on, very good. And morale is good. I mean, I think overall morale and departments is up, it's good, so. Council comments, are there anything, is there anything council would like to say? All right. Okay, so at this time, I would formally open the public hearing for the twenty twenty-five budget year. Coordinates twenty twenty-four O R thirteen. Public budget has been advertised, Donna can confirm, I saw the advertisement myself. It was advertised for public hearing today, with potential adoption at our October meeting. So is there anyone that has any comments or monstrosities to make about the twenty twenty-five proposed budget from the public now to be the time? No fairness, making one final call. With no one coming forward, I will now officially close the public hearing portion for the twenty twenty-four O R thirteen budget for twenty twenty-five. And we will move into appointments and resolutions for your considerations this evening. First up, we have a road transfer agreement. I mentioned that we were hoping to improve Charlestown Landing Road in order to make that pathway accessible for whatever we end up doing down there. If the State Park wants to come in and make it their entrance or activate the land, the road needs to be improved before we can do any of that. And in doing all that and applying for a grant, we realized we didn't actually own that road, it actually belongs to the county. And so I reached out to the county and asked if we could transfer that over. It's a small portion of the road. It is only point-two-eight miles, point-two-eight miles that really should be ours. And then they said, hey, we've got another, we got another section we need you to take over too. It was actually point-zero-six miles off of Main Street down here at the end, the main street that they also found was in their inventory that really should probably be in our inventory. So Perry has worked with the county, with Scott Lewis of the county to get this road transfer agreement. There's no exchange of funds with a small amount of roads. We're just saying that we want to take responsibility for those so that we can improve them when we want to. They do retain the right of way if they have any utilities under there, they do retain, have a retention of that under here, so. With that, I would need a motion on this road transfer resolution, twenty twenty-four R O six.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Ronnie Levens. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Shannon Elder. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That would be unanimous. Being a resolution only requires one reading, thank you all. The next prior consideration is the twenty twenty-four O R eleven. This is the salary ordinance for twenty twenty-five. The salary ordinance for twenty twenty-five, it does reflect a three percent cost of living increase for all city employees and a proposed increase in the police officer's salary up to a base of sixty thousand, which is accounted for in the proposed budget this year. With that, I'm going to change the motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Ronnie Levens. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Shannon Elder. Any questions or discussion? This is just on the first reading tonight, we didn't do this in two readings. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, we will have that back at our next meeting for second and final reading. You've all been provided with the twenty twenty-four O R twelve. This is the elected official's salary, also reflects a three percent cost of living for all elected officials. Need a motion to put it out for consideration.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion from Shannon Elder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ronnie Levens. Any questions?
I think you need to take the two thousand out for the president.
So this was my request out on it. Donna and I talked about it, and it's very common for city councils to compensate the council president, whoever he or she may be, since it's an elected position within the council itself. Slightly a bit more, it's not huge, it's two thousand dollars extra for the year. Very common practice, and I will say that the council president, I mean, I've been, I've been beaten up on him pretty bad this year with meetings. I'm, it's nice to have the ability to meet with the council president monthly at minimum or to reach out at any time and say, hey, this is coming up, I need feedback. So it does require a little bit more work than the traditional standard position, and it is a flexible position. This isn't about Brian Hester, who's our current council president. This is a position that's you guys decide every year. So I did put it in, I mean, I will argue for it. He's going to argue against it.
Yep, argue against it is because we all joined on this knowing that this is what we are doing, and no one expected to get any more.
I don't have a vote on it, sir. I just, I just say that you have committed a lot of extra time to this, and it's been, it's really been good working with you.
I thank you, sir.
I will give about two cents. I've relied a lot on Brian this year. I know this is like everything every year, but Brian's been a go-to, and I think going forward he'll always be a go-to. Hopefully going forward he'll stay right where he's at, and I'll leave right with that, in my opinion. This is me.
I agree.
I think you're going to be out on this, sir.
One of us here can be okay with not having a vote.
Let's just take a vote.
And you don't even have to vote for it if you don't want, but I think it.
I want to vote, I want to vote for the other stuff, though, so I have to vote.
Well, your, your objection to it is duly noted.
Okay, as long as it's noted.
But, I mean, you could make a motion to change it, I don't think you're going to get a second from what I'm hearing. All right, so I have a first and a second. We've had discussion, all in favor of twenty twenty-four O R twelve and the elected official's salary on first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. We'll bring that back for second and final reading in October. And then the next step is the budget itself. So we had the public hearing properly advertised, this is the first reading. We will have the adoption slash second reading at your October meeting, assuming that you pass it on first meeting tonight, to be clear. So twenty twenty-four O R thirteen is the twenty twenty-five budget. It reflects the adopted tax levy of four billion two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand nine-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. Paying for a product copy of the full item breakdown budget to your office meeting in consideration. I need a motion to put it up for consideration.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Chuck Eaton. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, it's competition, I'm going to give it to Bill O'Grady first. A second, I'd go first, on questions or discussion on the budget. I'm not hearing any, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, we will bring it back at the next meeting for adoption and second reading. So the, the thing that we added in the three-year growth levy appeal, so there's a process through the Department of Local Government Finance where we are capped at a certain growth amount. There's a formula that's used every year, and so this is the amount of your net assessed value levy that you can tap into for that year. We're doubly capped this year because the General Assembly two years ago said we could not grow more than four percent. And they said that even if the formula came in higher, you couldn't. But one thing they do have is a mechanism through which communities that are quickly growing communities can do their own math and form, and so we're growing so fast that we really need to capture more of our growth levy. And so we have an appeal for that. We can, we've done this every year for the past few years. We've been fortunate that the DLGF has agreed with our application, and we have received those funds every year. It's allowed us to do some, some critical things, like adding a police officer a few years ago, you know, increasing salaries. We were able to add a position in Tully Jackson's office, so the building commissioner slash code enforcement slash all that other stuff went from two to three last year. It helped us add the school resource officer last year for, this year for Tyler Lyons, and do our lease program for our vehicles. So we use it for a variety of things. I've given you the whole application packet because we do have to write a justification for this application, and there's some data and statistics that I quoted in that, in that argument, and I thought you might want to read those and see those. Helps you communicate back out to, to people about some of our growth factors. Along with those would be the consideration that our police call volume has gone up from twenty eighteen eighty-one percent. Just with the nature of more traffic coming through town and more people. At our construction, our overall permits have gone up forty percent, forty-five percent. That, you know, we're now in MS four communities. So we're, we're seeing growth, I cited all those things. What this is, is it's just the application. You have to vote to approve it in order for Donna's team to submit it. We will, if you approve it, we submit it, we will not know if we get the full amount or any amount until about December. But we have factored that into the budget and have flexibility. These are just the things that we really consider critical. So what I've argued for is the addition of two police officers, patrol officers, an additional school resource officer for the new elementary school, and two new city maintenance people. Because the fact that we do it all so few is really getting hard, we need some additional city staff and laborers. That's it for you. I need a motion to, to move it forward.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Ronnie Levens. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Shannon Elder. Any questions on this?
Just want to make sure that we make that. Everybody knows that this is a balanced budget, so we are not.
Yes.
We are not trying to dip in the money that we don't have right now with this levy coming in, so.
Right.
This is balanced, and they do a good job of making sure that this is balanced. I appreciate all your work.
We do always submit a balanced budget. We want to keep, it's that finding that right balance between keeping the tax rate as low as possible while still being able to provide the services that we need to provide. We're very successful at that, and this has hardly any impact on that at all. So it's, it's just, and it goes through a strict review process. One of the factors the DLGF considers when they grant this, if they grant it, is the impact on the taxpayers. If they feel like this is going to be unfair in any way, they don't do it. So it's a, it's a check and balance along the way, too.
Thank you for your hard work, appreciate it.
Donna, Donna and her team have really worked hard on this budget, they do every year. They keep track of it all year long. It's not just, this is not something they do in a couple of weeks before August. They keep track of things all year long to see what's increasing and what's not. And then we start on the staff level, we start in really June, start to talk to each other about, okay, what, what do we need? And we basically go to Donna and her staff and say, this is what we would like to have. And then she magically makes it happen for us.
You do a great job.
Kind of like, you know, like I said about Brian, it's real nice to be able to come in here and talk to them, very professional, get all the information we need, so thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys for all your hard work.
All right, now this is a, this does not. All right, now this is a, this does not, this is, this is just an application, this is not an ordinance, so we're in a car, so we need a vote for us to, to move that forward. But all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? That's unanimous, so Donna will have you sign that and we will submit that with everything in this time. All right, that is all, the old business, the only new business I had for you is previously we had discussed the settlement for the Mandela House, the, from our opioid funds and when we looked back through things, this actually didn't require its own resolution, I just needed a vote from the council to move this forward. They had submitted a letter asking for all of our unrestricted funds, they have great statistics on what they're doing up there, success, they're asking for the $6,660.69 to be awarded to them, I just need a motion to, to make that happen.
So loose.
All right, was that you or Bill? All right, I have a motion from Brian Hester.
Second.
Second, from Ronnie Levens, any questions?
I know they're not here, but I'd like to thank them for what they told us last meeting and hopefully, hopefully you'll keep moving forward, so.
Yep, they're doing a good job. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, we'll get that paid out to them. All right, that's all I had, unless you have anything else, I'm just leaving motion to adjourn.
I will.
Surprisingly, Chuck Deaton makes a motion to adjourn. And Shannon, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, but don't leave until you sign for Donna or Phil, don't you go.